Good evening, welcome. I apologize if we're running a few minutes late. I'd like to welcome everyone to our January Board Meeting 2018. I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday and New Year. Pam, would you please note we have Corm, Ms. Robles, Mr. Exer, Ms. Solis, myself, Judge Hagerty, Ms. Nahada, and Dr. Graham. Dr. Gonzalez, would you mind leaving us on the pledge? You can do it from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Item 1.4, approval of minutes, October 19th, 2017, December 12th, 2017, December 15th, 2017.
Move to approve? Any questions? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Exer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahada?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Pam, under 1.6, open forum, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No one has brought anything back up here.
Has anyone here to speak under open forum? Going once, twice? 1.7.
Under item 1.7, under item 1.7.1, we do not have any retirees here this evening. Item 1.7.2, Dr. Sarata will present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2015-2016 to Ms. Josette Shaughnessy, CPA, Vice President, Financial and Administrative Operations, and Mr. Fernando Flores, CPA, Associate Vice President, Budget and Financial Services.
Vice President Shaughnessy, I have Associate Vice President Flores, if you'll join me to once again receive the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I believe this is the 21st year in a row that these two have led their respective division departments in earning this most prestigious award. So it's certainly my pleasure to present it to you and on behalf of the Board of Trustees to thank you for your leadership, for all the efforts of your areas in ensuring that we receive this award for 21 years in a row. Thank you both so much.
Item 1.7.3, Ms. Teri Reiner, CPA, Partner, Penya Briones McDaniel &amp; Company, PC, will present the audit results of the Fiscal Year 2017 financial statements.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and present the audited financial statements to you. Get the presentation. Thank you very much for allowing me to present the audited financial statements for you for year ending, year ending August 31st, 2017. Again, I'm Teri Reiner and I'm one of the audit partners with Penya Briones McDaniel's, we're a CPA firm here located in El Paso, Texas. What I'm here to do or so too is to kind of present the audit to you and kind of let you know what our responsibilities are and still what your responsibilities are for the audit and what an audit is. So to begin with or so when we do an audit, we are not guaranteeing that 100% of everything is accurate. We are looking to make sure that everything is reasonably assured, that it's, the financial statements are reasonably presented. We're also going to establish, determine what our testing is. As I said, we do not test 100%. We go and look at risk assessment, determine what type of testing and do a scope testing on, on your audit, on your financial statements. Also, what we're required to do is come to you. You are the governing body and we're required to come to you and talk to you about any significant matters, audit matters or so, and that's what I'm going to do tonight with you. Again, you know, we perform the audit, but however the audit or so does not relieve you, the governing body being responsible for the audit and your accounting system. One of the things that, that is done at the end of the audit is a letter of representation that your chief financial folks, Ms. Shaughnessy, Mr. Flores or so, have to sign a letter that says that they have prepared and provided us with all the information that we need to do with the audit. They inform us if there's any problems with the accounting system, any irregularities, that they're required to provide us all with that information. So they signed a letter at that, at the end of the audit saying they've done that. So again, it's not relieving you, your responsibilities of the audit. When we do an audit or so, there's basically five elements of internal control that we're looking at. The first one is your control environment. That is your attitude at the top. That's what we call kind of the tone of the top. That starts with the President, with the Board of Trustees, it goes to your Cabinet, it goes to all the department heads, and so that's an area that we look at and we're determining our testing and the quality of your control system here at the College. Another one is your risk assessments. We're looking to see if you have policies and procedures in place to make sure that you're handling your accounting and your, your grants properly. And then we're looking to make sure that those policies and procedures are given, that information is communicated to your staff so they know what they're supposed to be doing. And also so your staff knows what, if there is any issues or problems, what the process and the procedures are to be able to report that there was any problems with that. And then we're looking at your monitoring. Again, you, when we do the audit, we're not here 100% of the time. We're only here for about a month and a half. And so really to have a good system of controls in place, you must have them. It's not the auditor's responsibility to have them, but it is yours. And so we're looking to make sure that you have an ongoing monitoring procedures in place, that your, your staff is overviewing and looking to make sure your system is working as it's supposed to. And the kind of, the last element of the internal controller so is the one I always think that most people think of about internal controls and testing, and that's our control activities. And so that's kind of broken up into four different parts. One is your performance review. So we're doing that, but we're also checking to make sure that you're doing that. We're checking to make sure that you're comparing your current financial information with other information. So with you, a lot of it with your budgets. We also do a lot of analytics where we're taking a look at your tuition revenue to your enrollment to make sure those numbers make sense with your, what your tuition rates are. We're, we're also going to look at your, your expectations and your budgets, we're reviewing that. We're looking at payroll information, so we look at the number of employees you have based up, and then the payroll that you have to make sure those numbers, when we look at that, to make sure that makes sense. Then your information processing, that's where we're looking to make sure you have process of approvals in place. And so we do some testing to make sure those approvals are in place and are working. And then physical controls, so we're looking to see that you're doing physical inventories of your fixed assets, that you have controls over place, over cash, you know, of your assets. And the last one is segregation of duties. I know sometimes people ask, well, why can't I go ahead and just take this whole transaction from the beginning to the end? Why can't I just go out and decide what I want to buy? Go buy it and then go pay for it? Well, you can't with, for segregation of duties, you want to separate those different activities by different people so that way there is that a review and approval process in place so someone can't do something improper because there's others, steps involved in there and other people looking at that. So we're, we're looking at that to make sure that's set up properly. And so when we get done or so, what we're trying to conclude is, are the numbers materially correct? And are you following proper government accounting standards? And so that's what we're trying to conclude through all of this audit process. And, and one of the things too that we do with an audit, since you have so much funding from the federal government and the state, you have about, this last year you had about $63.5 million in federal funding and $4.8 million of state funding. So that requires you to have what they call a single audit. It used to be called an A133 and now it's Uniform Guidance. So when we did our testing on that area, we looked at 91% of your federal awards and 67% of your state awards. And as, if you go into your, the big financial statement or so, that detail or so is on your page 53 and 54. But we basically looked at your student financial aid cluster and we also look at the migrant education college assistant program over on the federal side. On the state side, we looked at your, your Texas state grants and the Texas funding. And then we were, looked at the Texas workforce, the skills development area. You know, you had some major programs in there with, that you worked with Providence, Cardinal Health Pharmacy, and plastic molding. And so we looked at those programs too during our testing. When we do an audit or so too, there's sometimes, there are some estimates that are made to the, the numbers. You think sometimes numbers are hardcore, they're, they're, you can tie them down to everything, but we do have a major estimate for you and that is your allowance for doubtful accounts on your student accounts receivables, notes receivables. And that's how we come up with that allowance or so, and your staff does. They look at the past history or so of collections of the accounts receivables and also then of the students' accounts and still determine what they believe is, needs to be a fair allowance of those that are not going to be collected. So that's an estimate on your books. The other significant item or accounting principle or so, this is our third year involved in that, but it still is one that you have no control over, that when the actuaries do their report and come up with their, their pension plan, they come up with their liability, then we have to book that. And again, you have no control over that. So again, this is our third year, but one again, this is a major accounting principle for you. The numbers for that accounting principle or so is we had to increase the, your net pension liability up to $25.4 million, so it almost increased $2 million this year. Then you have these deferred inflow and outflow accounts or so, and they had a decrease in your deferred outflows by 1.1 million and deferred inflows decreased by $2.4 million. And so what does that mean to your bottom line? Is you had to add to your expense, to your pension expense, $675,000 of expense to your, your bottom line this year. And again, that's something you don't have control over is when you get that information or so from the TRS, that's what you have to book. And if, and all the, more information or so is in your footnotes in your audited financial statements on page 23 to through 28. And then just some warning or so coming up, you know, we don't have any numbers. We're hoping maybe they would have given us some estimates at this point, but they haven't yet. Next year in your 2018 financial statements, we're going to have to record another large liability for what they call your other post-employment benefits other than pension. And what that is, is your health insurance that you provide to your retirees. And so again, that's going to be another large liability that you're going to have to record in your books, but we don't know what that amount is. So as soon as I know as your, your accounting, financial folks get that information, they'll be sharing that with you. When we did the audit or so, we had a couple audit adjustments or so. These audit adjustments too, they were ones that we worked with your accounting staff with and, and through the two of us or so to three of, all of us together or so came up with these adjustments, so they were not really unknown. One of them had to do with the dual credit recovery from the independent school districts and the private schools. This was something that you, you had agreements with them. What we were waiting on too is trying to kind of see the collectibility, as we talked about earlier, so with the receivables. If you can't collect them, we have to set up an allowance. And so we wanted to make sure this, we thought these were going to be valid receivables through correspondence and payments or so from them. It believed, we believe they are, and that added to income of $1.1 million to your books this year. Then also, this last year or so, you had bond issues. You went out and issued a bunch of new bonds, $105 million of bonds, but you also refunded some old bonds of 2001 and 2007. When you refund bonds or so, that is an, a transaction that doesn't happen very often. And so there's a lot of parts or so with that. One of them is we recorded deferred gain or deferred loss on them, depending on what that comes out when you exchange one bonds for, so there are other bonds or so in there. Unfortunately, we got our entry messed, reversed or so about $600,000. And so that caused it, when we had to do, adjust the books, point, $1.2 million to interest expense. So those two together though, they had a decrease to your net bottom line of $117,000 or less than 1% to your, to your bottom line. So it was very minimal. The other thing is we have an audit adjustment that we, we don't make, is capitalizing your interest on your bonds. And this is something that the College decided not to do over the number of years and so, and so that's what the unadjusted entry was. One of the things that we didn't add in here because we've not kept track because it's not been material, if we had capitalized that, we would have depreciation expense to reduce that amount. And again, it's just something that, that's immaterial to the yearbooks, but I need to let you know about it. So two is we're getting now, getting now closer to our conclusion or so. One of the things we want to say is that your monthly financial statements that you are receiving from your financial department or so are presented according to government accounting principles, so you are getting good information for you to be able to make your decisions upon. And we had no audit findings or issues or so that we needed to report to you today. One of the things too, when you, you had your, your audited financial statements or so, you note in there, there's three different reports that we, we issue. One is on the financial statements themselves, the numbers where we believe that they're fairly stated in all materials, in all, in material respects, excuse me. And it's called an unmodified report or a clean opinion, so that's as good as you can get. The other report or so is what we call our yellow book or so, that's the government accounting standards and auditing standards. And that is saying that we believe your internal controls over your financial reporting system, again, is good that there were no, we had no findings or issues or material weaknesses involved with that. And the last report has to do with those major programs where I said that what we audited was 91, 68% of those, those major programs, that we have to look at the compliance with that to make sure you're using the money as what you're supposed to, what the grants say you are. And so again, that's your single audit, and again, we had no findings or material weaknesses in that. Then we also look at your Public Funds Act to make sure you're in compliance with that and, and we believe you are. Now we'll go through a few numbers or so. This page right here is what we call your statement of net position. This is your, your asset side of it. So as you can see, just your unrestricted cash increased about $9.2 million, $9.3 million. So that was about a 10% increase in there, so that's very strong. That restricted cash and cash equipment, that's your bond proceeds that, that are invested or so, they're going to be used in, for your new improvements and so forth that you're going to do with those bonds. So that's what increased because you issued $105 million in new bonds this year. Accounts receivable, that again, that's kind of waiting for those, for the students or so. That increased about $2.1 million. It's about a 15% increase. You think about though, your tuition has gone up 15.5%. So that increase in your receivable is in line with the tuition increase. The same thing with the notes receivable, that's, that has went up too slightly. Again, again, it's related to your tuition increase that's going there. One of the large items too on here is prepaid charges. What that is or so, again, remember you end August 31st, but your students have already enrolled for the new fall semester. And so that's the money that you have paid out to them in the Pell money already, that, so they've enrolled, they enrolled in August, but yet it really is for the next fall, the next year semester. And so you've already probably paid that out, but yet it's really is for your next accounting year, so those put into your prepaid. Your other large asset is your capital asset, so that's increased about $6.9 million. And that's, you know, you've got the architect building up and going as well as the starting the new plans of all the new improvements that you're going to do, has caused that account to increase. The, the other half of your statement of net position is your liabilities. So your accounts payable, that's just to your vendors or so, and there's no major issues or increases with that. That's just sometimes due to the timing of when you get the bills in or when you're able to pay them. Your accrued liabilities, that increased about $1.5 million. And what's included there is your accrued interest on your bonds. And so again, you've got $105 million more of bonds than you had last year, and so that, that went up to $2.3 million and it was less, it was about $900,000 last year. The other large item here is this is the unearned revenue. On the page before, we had the prepaid expenses that again was related to the tuition for the, the next year, the next semester, the fall semester. This is your unearned revenue. So this is all of tuition or so that's come in from the students that really is going to get recorded in the following year. So when you net those together or so on your, on your books or so, you're sitting at about $28.1 million this year versus $27.3 million last year, so that's a good increase. So it's sitting there as a liability, but it's just really waiting to be recognized as revenue in the following year. So it's, it's a good liability to have. Then you can see your net pension liability, that's where you have, this year again, was that $25.4 million. Last year it was about $23.5 million. So you can see that increase, that $2 million there. And then your other large increase or so is your bonds payable again, because you know you issued those $105 million out. But you were able to get a $14 million premium, and so that is a positive to you. This slide just shows you your net positions. You know, so we had our assets, we have our liabilities, this is what's left over. And you have to put them in different buckets or so. And the one I just wanted to point out to you is your unrestricted, because that's what's left over, that doesn't have any restrictions on it, any purpose that you have to. This is what you have left over. And that increased almost $2 million or a 7.6% from the last year. So that's again, is very, very positive. Overall, you had a $17.5 million increase of your, unto your net position, about a 12.1%. So that was a very, very healthy and very good increase. But you needed to do that because what I wanted to show you on this slide is, just quickly, when we did the pension and had to record that pension liability, you hit this net, net position or so, hit the bottom line by $22.4 million. And so you're needing to build up your net position or so to be able to cover this next hit that you're going to hit when you, when you do the, the other benefit program. So over, over a five-year period, you had a $36, $36.8 million increase to your net position. If you hadn't had that $22.4, you would have had almost, you know, $59 million increase into your net position, which is very positive. This slide or so shows you your revenue by sources. So what I have on here too is I didn't do the whole 10 years. The last column over here is, is, is 2008, so that was the 10 years. So you've got four years and then I skipped all the way back to 2008 to kind of give you a comparison or so, because on the next slide with the percentages, I really wanted to have you take a look at that. So your tuition and fees or so increased about $3.1 million, so that's about a 14% increase. So again, that goes along with the increase of the tuition rate that you, you've implemented over the last year. Your federal grants and state grants or so, they're really, when you put those together, it was very minimal change, only a decrease of about $350,000, so that was not real big. Your other revenue, what we talked about again, that in, the dual credit recovery, the $1 million caused that to increase. And then also you had some, some insurance recovery for some roofs that, for $1.1 million that went into that account that caused that to increase and this year didn't last. Your state appropriations, that stayed really flat. It was, it went up about $550,000. Majority of that had to do with healthcare. The education portion of that only increased $46,000, so that was very, very minimal. And I've got some more slides to show you on that. Your ad valorem tax, your property tax increased $1.6 million. Again, it's the, your property tax rate did not increase significantly, it's just the value of the properties that, that did help with you with that. Your federal grants not operating with that is, that's your student financial aid. So again, that stayed pretty steady. It had a little decrease of $300,000, but not much. Your investment income, that went up because again, you've got the bond money, you haven't spent it yet, so it's been invested in there and so that caused that account to go up for you. So all, overall or so, you had about $9.2 million of increase, increase in revenue from last year to this year. This one I wanted to kind of point out or so, just a couple items on here. The funding is, as you all know, but just again, to point out to everyone, 10 years ago, back in 2008, your tuition and fees are so covered about 9.7% of your revenue sources. Now it's 13.5. And the reason why is because you go down to the second half, the state appropriations used to be 29.5%, now it's only at 21%. So the state continues and continues to cut back on what they're funding and pushing that funding and your revenue sources down here locally. And you can also see that in your property taxes where before it was 23.7% and now it's up to 28.4%. And then where did you spend your money? So this is, this is a graph or so that'll show you that. Your instruction, it went up $2.6 million, about a 3.6%. Your academic support, it went up about $1.3 million. Your institutional support went up about $1.4 million. And your scholarships went about $3.3 million down, but I'll, I'm allowed to try, see if I can explain that to you when we get to there. Your main increase or reason or so, your increase or so in your expenses or so, really were your salaries. You did a 2% across the board raise for all your employees. And also the health insurance, it increased by $1.4 million. And so that's spread out too, through, through those different areas. And then the other thing is just buying new equipment. You know, buying equipment, buying furniture, buying computers and operating supplies or so for your different programs or so caused those increases in those. And also looking at that and comparing to your budget or so, you still stayed within your budget on those expenses even though it went up from last year. The scholarships, yes, you look at that and say, hey, how come that went down? And see, the way I try to explain that, over in your revenue, you have discounts. We have to net the, the tuition against discounts. And what that is, is you get a lot of money from Pell. And Pell, what it does, if a student comes in, and let's say, let's just use the example, they come in and they get $5,000 for Pell. Last year, $3,000 went to, for tuition and fees, and so they were given a check for $2,000. Well, the $2,000 went into the scholarship account, the $3,000 from Pell went against that discount in your revenue. Let's see, but your, that your tuition rate goes up and so now the tuition is $4,000 out of that $5,000 of Pell. So now you've got only $1,000 that go to scholarship and the $4,000 goes over into that discount over in the revenue. And that's just, it's just a bookkeeping, the way that we're supposed to record it or so. It's still, when you net it together, you, you net those two together and you look at your discounts last year were about $46.5 million and your, your scholarships were $26 million. So that's a total of $17.6 million. The year before, you had discounts of $41 million and you have, had scholarships of $29 million, so your total was $70.6 million. So in, in total, you still gave out two, two, over $2 million more to your students than you did the year before. It's just where we have to put it over on your financial statements is different because of the amount that we have to charge to tuition versus what is given back to the students for them to be able to live off of. So I hope that made some sense. And this is just the, again, the percentages like we have over on the, the revenue side or so, and there really isn't a large change or so in, in where you're spending your, your funds over the years. This is your, your chart. And this again, these are all these statistics that you have in your financial statements, what I think are very, very useful for you to be able to use. This is, shows your, your tuition and fees and so you can show that where you have been over the last 10 years. You know, you're sitting at right now is 1,368 for 12 credits or so. That's still our closest university here, UTEP or so. That's still, you are, they are approximately three times more than what you are charging your students for the same education. This is, shows the, the property values. So again, you can see, you really haven't had a large, large increase in your property values. There's another statistic or so in there that I did not include or so, but just looking at it, when we compare what you charge versus the other major taxing entities, the independent school districts or the county and the city and the medical center, you are at 4.6% of all of those taxes. And that's what you were this year and that's what you were 10 years ago. And so you've stayed consistent. You have not increased your tax rate any more proportionate than any other entities out there. But you can just see over the 10-year period or so that the property taxes, you've collected almost $20 million more 20 years, than 20 years ago. And you're having to do that, one of the, one of the ways you're having to raise revenues because of this, this table right here is the state appropriations. Again, this shows what they've been giving you over the last 10 years. So you can kind of compare this year to 10 years ago. Actually, you received 1.1, almost $1.2 million less this year than what you did 10 years ago. And you're servicing at this point in time over, you know, over 1,000 students more than what you did back then. So you can really tell, yes, where they're shifting the burden and how much the state is, is contributing to the running of the college anymore. This slide or so, just kind of, I think it's interesting about your students' demographics or so on here. Right now, and I, sorry, I should have put this, that on your slide or so. Your, back 10 years ago, your average course load was 8.9 hours, now it's at 8.2. And I think where that goes with or so is your average age. Back in 10 years ago, it's your average age of your student was 25.3 years, and now it's 22.4. And where you can really see that big change is you're under your 18. You're, you're sitting right now with students under 18 of 6, 6,595. 10 years ago, you only had 690 students that were under the age of 18. So you can really change, see a big shift or so or where you're bringing in those dual credit students and the early college students or so where that has really changed. Oops. And last but not least or so is I just want to And last but not least or so, is I just want to thank again everybody, I talked to you a little bit about the tone of the top, making, you know, your tone of the top or so is what drives the college, what will determine how they operate, if they believe having good controls or accounting controls are so unimportant or so, and we have found that that is the case, and, and we saw that when we do our audit or so, that we, doing an audit or so, we must have the cooperation of all the staff, and we, when we do an audit or so, we're working with the accounting department, we look at the IT, we go over the student financial aid, we do purchasing, we go over and look at the grants folks or so, and know, everyone here or so is so professional and cooperative in all of the work that we do, and we realize that we add a lot of burden and work when we come over here, and we can't thank you and your staff or so for all the cooperation and professionalism that they gave us when we did the audit. And that's, that is my presentation, does have any questions?
I have no questions. Questions? Ms. Leece?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much for the great presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, very important.
Thank you, Ms. Reiner.
Item 1.7.4, optional presentations will be made by the presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Last year I had a really interesting conversation at the American Association of Colleges and Universities. I'd attended a thread that was looking at the importance of having a diverse faculty in order to assure student success, and the challenge that a lot of people were running into at this particular conference, representing universities and colleges from all over the nation, was in their words, attracting diverse faculty to their institutions. And so eventually, my thread turned into going around the room and asking everybody, well, what does the demographics of your institution look like? And I shared, to the best of my knowledge, what our faculty looked like, and everybody wanted to know how we did it. And my answer at the time was more related to geography and trying to explain exactly where El Paso, Texas was located, but as I've been reflecting on it, I realized I answered that question completely wrong. The reason why we have a diverse faculty here at EPCC is educational leaders in this area decided many years ago to insist on inclusion in our classrooms. And because we insisted that students, regardless of their nationality, their income, their language abilities, should have full access to a high-quality education, we now reap the benefits of having an educated population who wish to lead our educational institutions. In a day and age where diversity is making the news every single day, your faculty feel very strongly that we carry this legacy, and that we want to assure that our students are equally as empowered, regardless of who they are, to succeed in our classrooms. And as I stand before people who I know are leaders nationally in the area of diversity, and as I have the honor of teaching at an institution that has won the heat award for many years in a row, I know it is all of our goal to make sure that our students, regardless of who they are or how they identify, that they are able to find homes within our institution. It is because of that that I wanted to share several of the projects the faculty have taken on in the last couple of weeks, to try and assure that that is happening. Now, the least of which is the 2017, I'm sorry, the 2018 Border Learning Conference that will be hosted at the Marriott on February the 15th. The Border Learning Conference was actually built by EPCC faculty, and it was intended to be an effort to bring local educational experts together to address learning challenges that are unique to our border region. This year, the theme of the conference is called liminal spaces and embracing opportunities, and the idea is that we're going to bring in local experts to talk about how our students are in places of transition, and how a student in transition may be vulnerable to not being retained or succeed in our classroom, and how do we teach people to be successful educators to students who feel this tension. I encourage all of you, if you have time on the 15th, please go check out the conference. It is an amazing conference, we're bringing in talent from around the area, and our educational partners as well. But it's beyond simply teaching teachers how to be more effective in the classroom, we're also dedicated to making sure that your students succeed outside of the classroom as well. One of my fellow faculty members is named Dr. Melissa S. Mocker, and Dr. S. Mocker observed last year that she was receiving more and more students in her class, in her office hours rather, who identified as, with the LGBTQ community. Many of them were expressing feelings of anxiety and confusion and wondering if they would continue to be safe within our institution. As we came to discover, several faculty started talking with Melissa, that several of us were having a very similar experience, but it was actually Melissa who decided to do something about that. She began to work with our diversity programs here at EPCC to launch what is called Safe Zones. And what Safe Zone seeks to do is train all faculty as well as several administrators and staff to be able to act as allies to the LGBTQ community, to assure that a student who walks in, who needs particular resources or counseling, can be routed to the resources that they need, and that we can provide the faculty members specifically, in our case, to be able to assist the student as they're working through their college experience and coming from a minority group. Beyond that, we also have faculty who are passionate about making sure that your students feel at home on campus regardless of who they are. One of those, Ms. Donna Munoz emailed me this morning, Donna and Marsha Clark, another faculty member, have been constantly advocating for the need to install playgrounds on all of our campuses, which may not seem like a big deal, but as Donna pointed out to me today in her email, as she was walking to class, she encountered what she thought was a couple and their child walking around our campus on BV. She went, of course, to talk to them because she's Donna, and Donna discovered it was not their child, it actually was the student, a child of another student. And apparently what is happening is students are networking together to identify who has kids, and they're watching each other's kids between classes. So Donna again chimed in, and she said, Rebecca, are we doing everything that we can do? Because if students are already helping each other, then surely there's one more thing we can do, and she again said, you know what, we need playgrounds. Because while student unions are great, and library rooms are great for a traditional student, those aren't really places that you can take kids. But if you wanted to meet with your team on campus, or have a place to work on your homework and be on our wifi while your kid is still able to go play, having a playground would help quite a bit. That kind of advocacy I hear throughout your faculty all the time. We are very, very passionate about making sure that from training to resourcing students to fighting for new infrastructure is something that stays at our forefront, and I know it is something that I say a lot, but hear this from my court, there is nothing more important to your faculty than making sure our students succeed. And by students succeeding, I don't just mean passing my class, I mean receiving the education that they need to be able to return to an institution that they fell in love with and lead it, so that when they're the ones who go to conferences in the future, they can continue to turn heads as people wonder, how did you accomplish this? And our answer will not be that we borrowed someone else's success or attracted someone else's student, but that we continue to do the hard work of making sure that our classrooms were diverse, and that we created the next generation of diverse leadership. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, and please, we really enjoyed all the information you shared with us, and tell Donna thank you for that great idea.
I will do that, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, President Serrata, Chair Fierro, members of the board. It's great seeing you, I hope you had a great holiday season and are having thus far a good year. It looks like it's going to be a busy one. So first and foremost, I just want to start by saying thank you for giving us this platform to talk and to let you know about what we're doing. So I'm going to start by saying, telling you all about some of the events that we will be having over the course of the next couple of months. So in February, we will be having political debates and forums for the different electoral races that are going on in, in February, in March. We will be having a Democratic primary debate for the El Paso County Judge, the Precinct Two County Commissioner, and the State Representative for District 75. These, these are going to be all our, our different campuses, the first two are going to be at Trans Mountain, and the last one's going to be at Mission del Paso. And we will be having two big ones, one being the US Representative for the 16th District, the Democratic and the Republican primary debate. We are looking to partner with Telemundo and other groups, local groups, so I do not have the time for that yet, but I will make sure to share that in the community announcements once it's all final. And we'll be having also the Governor of Texas Democratic and Republican primary forums. One of our main goals this year, or this semester for student government, is to promote civic engagement and political participation, not only among our students, what, which are actually will, the, our, our main focus, but also to educate and empower our community at large. So we, through a partnership we have with Voto Latino, we will be having several voter registration tables at, all throughout this week, at all of our different campuses, and that, those efforts are going to extend all into the February 5th deadline for, for registering voters, and then we will shift our focus to making sure that these students and community members that we have registered to vote actually show up to the polls, and that is where Voto Latino comes in. So if you do want to be part of this initiative, and if you want to be part of the movement, we will be having a volunteer deputy registrar training tomorrow at Valle Verde, at the Valle Verde campus at 10:00 AM. So if you're not at the cafeteria annex, so if you are not registered to vote or are looking to become a volunteer deputy registrar, I do want to extend that invitation to you all to be part of this, this movement. Another thing that we have going on this coming week, we're going to be going to our Region One Spring Meeting, as I keep mentioning, we're the president's school for, for the region, and that's something that we're very proud of, and we're going to be letting EPCC's voices be heard in Midland College. Another thing that I want to talk about, and just kind of to segue off of what Ms. Bell just said, I also received that email about the students who were walking the child, those two students happened to be SGA members, or were SGA members last semester. So when they told us about that initiative, we felt that it was more than necessary to support this effort. I believe we do need playgrounds for our not-so-traditional students who have families to be able to have a place to give to their kids, and so that it doesn't take away from their study time. And it's one of the, one of the issues that we wanted to address, kind of like food insecurity amongst college students, is the ones that are being most affected by food insecurity are those who have families. And of course, this is our, like, wanting to help out our students, and I'm glad that the faculty is also on board with this, because that will just make our voices louder. We already established a meeting with, with her to talk about the childcare opportunities and the playground here at Valle Verde. And another thing that I wanted to talk about, that Ms. Bell already talked about, is we are looking to make all of our SGA offices and all of our SGA members Safe Zone trained. So yeah, that's one of the things that we, we have going on. I am also just wanting to say that we're very, very excited about all the initiatives that, and the events that we have going on this semester, but we are mostly excited about all the opportunities that you all have extended to us since my last board address. And tho, those opportunities to participate, to give input, and to have a say in the topics that, like branding, social media, recruitment, retainment, and the food insecurity, as well as many other important issues that will affect, that do affect our student population. But today I'm here to talk about one specific issue, which I hold close to my heart as a soccer player, well, previous soccer player. Students have expressed to me that they didn't even know that we had a soccer field, and they are currently playing soccer indoors. Once I told them that we do have a soccer field, they were very excited about the opportunity to go play outside. I told them for some reason they can't right now, but that I'm working on it. So soccer is, as you know, soccer is a very popular sport here in El Paso, but not just here in El Paso, nationally. I know that I was in a number of teams growing up in Juarez, and then joined the team at Austin when I came to El Paso. So I believe that Felix and Ojos would probably agree with me when I say that we have a lot of competitive talent here in El Paso, and we have a lot of potential. So perhaps you could consider, reconsider your previous decision that you made on the soccer field, and consider the possibility of perhaps starting collegiate team, a collegiate team here at EPCC in addition to our intramural sports program. The soccer field could be a goldmine if given the opportunity, and I believe our current students and our future students would benefit greatly from the opportunity to play that sport in the, in the field. As well as being a great opportunity for recruitment and retainment and for completion, as you already know, Felix and Ojos is a great, great, great work with maintaining high GPAs, our athletes are one of our top students, and I think we can definitely extend that opportunity to other students to play different sports. And that's all I have to say about that really, but we just want to thank you for your consideration, and for the opportunities that you have given to us, and for hearing our voices.
Thank you so much for being so proactive and bringing these issues to, to the board, we appreciate it, thank you.
Item 1.8, communications, none. Item 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Item 1.9.1, the Board of Trustees will consider and deliberate on appointing members to serve on the Legal Counsel Committee.
Board, under item 1.9.1, a few months ago, we discussed this at a board meeting, we asked Dr. Graham if she would chair the committee. Dr. Graham, I, I hope that you will share the committee and appoint your fellow, two fellow committee, committee members this evening. Dr. Serrata, would you mind helping Dr. Graham with some staff support? Maybe Ruben is very familiar with, of course, with the RFP process, but also keeping the security and all that, so maybe you can get somebody like, like Mr. Guerido, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Graham, would you mind?
So were you looking at a committee of three?
A committee of three, and then with the staff support, being the fourth person with a, but not, making recommendations, not, not moving forward, not, not voting.
How about Mr. Uxer, if he's available? Yes?
He didn't step, he didn't step back, so I guess so.
And that would be maybe Bonnie? Nahira?
So Pam, would you please note that the committee is made up with Dr. Graham sharing it, Ms. Nahira and Mr. Uxer. And Dr. Serrata will work with them as far as setting up calendars, meeting times, and coordinating staff support. Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Item 1.9.2, the Board of Trustees will deliberate on granting an easement to the El Paso Electric Company for locating overhead and underground lines that will be partially situated at the Valle Verde campus, legally described as portions of tracks 1-B2 and 1-C Block 4, tracks 1C3B4 Block 5, Escarate Grant, El Paso County, Texas.
Okay, motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Shaughnessy, how much are they paying us for this, these means? Any other questions? Okay, we're ready.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahira?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fierro? Item 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasuries Report, November 30th, 2017, December 31st, 2017, no action is necessary. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. Serrata will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fierro, members of the board, I'd like to begin by congratulating the district in particular, Vice President Shaughnessy, Mr. Flotus, and, and all of their team for having a perfect audit, once again, a non-qualified or non-modified audit. I really thank them and their, and their teams, as well as those in, in IT that facilitate this, IT is a part of the audit now as well, Student Services, and all of the financial aid that goes, that is distributed through Student Affairs, so certainly thank all of the team members for ensuring that we had what we want with respect to our audit, that we're running it. Some of the things that Ms. Reiner referenced is going to be some of my updates, as you saw, the state appropriations continue to- As you saw, the state appropriations continue to go down within that respective areas, and tuition and fees, as well as taxes, have a more prominent role. Was in Austin this week for the Texas Association of Community Colleges as a member of the Legislative Committee as well. Estimates currently are, the budget shortfall for the next biennium is looking anywhere from $6.8 to $10 billion is the current shortfall. The good news is, the price of oil has continued to rise, and that should mitigate. Also want to bring to attention, that we discussed, and bring to the attention of the board, Governor Abbott's campaign premise of capping tax revenue, not increase to taxes, but increase in tax revenue to 2.5%. Anything above that, based on the governor's proposal, would require 2/3 of the voters' approval. And remind that right now, tax increases are at 8%. Not that this board has done 8% other than in an emergency situation with regards to accreditation five, six years ago now, but that is what they're looking at. There is a focus on student success points from the Texas Association of Community Colleges. That will be the focus. That bodes well for our institution, given the fact that while enrollment has remained flat or steady, success points have continued to rise as we've had a laser focus. And there is a proposal also that is moving forward and beginning to gain traction on funding a portion of dual credit for students throughout the state. Currently, it depends on the district, whether tuition and fees for dual credit are waived, whether they're partially waived, completely waived. What we're looking at is leveling the playing field for the first 12 hours, and making a recommendation that those 12 hours be funded to the student through a grant. TEOG is one of the grant areas that we're looking at, making that proposal. The task force that I sit on, it had unanimous approval. This is folks from UT Systems, A&amp;M System, independent colleges and universities, the community college system, philanthropy, as well as the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, and superintendents from three prominent school districts. I will keep the board informed as we move forward. On February the 7th, Evan Smith from the Texas Tribune, the executive editor of the Texas Tribune, will be here at the Administrative Services Center in the auditorium. Evan is wanting to be on community colleges campuses more often. The Texas Tribune has come out to El Paso many times, each time they have been at the University of Texas at El Paso. This time, they've chosen to hold their event here at El Paso Community College, and he will be having a conversation with Mayor Di Margo. And we look forward to hosting the event here at the institution. You heard Ms. Boras from SGA reference food insecurity. I know, Mr. Uxter, this is in particular an area of interest for you, as it is for me as well. We will be hosting Dr. Sarah Goldrick-Robb, who is the author of Paying the Price, How College Costs Affect Students. She will be doing a presentation based on her book, and how it affects students of the Paso del Norte area, and what we can do about it. That will be held here on February the 9th, 2018, from 1:30 to 3:30, also in the auditorium. UTEP actually reached out to Dr. Goldrick-Robb and contracted and asked her to come to El Paso. Dr. Robb said she would come to El Paso only if she had the opportunity to also come to El Paso Community College. Groundbreaking for the new construction at the Trans Mountain Campus, the official groundbreaking, they've already broken ground, I know that, but the official groundbreaking event will be held on Thursday, February the 15th, at 10:00 AM. So we look forward to seeing many of you there. I want to, earlier in our budget workshop, at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, there was a real emphasis from the board, which I share, on doing all that we can to continue to create a college-going culture in our community, and increase the educational attainment level, and all of us having the belief that the best place to not only start, but the best place to finish what you start, as far as your higher education journey, is El Paso Community College. So next month, all employees will be invited to share their EPCC pride, and will be provided with recruitment cards, so that they can be ambassadors for EPCC. Every single employee will get a card with all of the useful phone numbers an individual would need to enroll, that they can share with interested individuals in the community. This is an employee-driven effort that demonstrates that all of us in higher education have a responsibility to help more students reach their dreams at EPCC. Kudos to Ms. Bell and the faculty, and all that they're doing with regards to this. This is also an effort, an example of how departments, district-wide are collaborating. Thanks to Mr. Raul Arizpe, and Oscar Velazquez of Counseling, along with Dr. Marissa Pierce, and the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee Leadership Academy Teams and Marketing for this cross-departmental effort to improve educational attainment for our region. And so I have a stack of the cards for each board member, because we know that you'll be passing these out as well, as you go out into the community, as you are in your respective fields of employment, and show that if a student needs anything, that this is the first step to them beginning their career at the institution. So I will share a stack with each of our respective board members. EPCC's Jenna Welch and Laura Bush Library at the Northwest Campus hosted State Library Director Mark Smith. This is significant, because it is the first time that a state library director from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission has visited El Paso. They collaborate with our libraries to ensure that our students and El Pasuans have access to the information they need to lead informed lives. In addition to a discussion on our innovative library partnerships, 36 children participated in a Storytime Interactive Toddler Tech activity, as well as a parallel library orientation with college students, which showcased the library's dual mission as an academic and public library. Many kudos to all, to Dean Dr. Denna and the library staff, for the great Laura Lee, and others who were very much involved in that. And finally, Chair, remind everyone, as we heard about athletics earlier, that the EPCC baseball and softball season, despite it being 32 degrees this morning, begins tomorrow. That concludes my report, Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sarata.
Item 1.11, Consent Docket, that includes item 3.2.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxter?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 2.0, Administration. Item 2.1.1, the following policy is presented for first reading. 7.08.02, Access to Education Records, No Action Is Necessary.
I have a question on that. Do we have, I guess whoever's going to deal with that, but do we have a form, the forms for students that wish to give their parents or their significant others access to their information?
Yes, we do.
We do? So already on, okay, thank you.
In full compliance, Dr. Graham, absolutely with FERPA. They would need to indicate that they want to give permission. In particular, this comes up with dual credit students. They are considered higher education students, college students, so they have to give permission for us to share their information with their parents. And we do have all of that paperwork.
Thank you, sir.
Item 3.1, Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Uxter?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 3.3, Information Items, No Action Is Required. Item 4.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Renew the Campus-Wide Annual Support Agreement with Oracle America Incorporated in the Amount of $583,904.
A motion to approve item 4.1 and 4.2?
Second.
Item 4.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract with GovernmentJobs.com Incorporated Doing Business as NeoGov in the Amount of $356,461.60 for a five-year period.
Any questions?
I just have one, this is not the same service that was being used before, right?
Are you referring, it is a, it's a system that we are upgrading. It is with a different company, but it is the same service in a sense, that we are currently using a service with PeopleAdmin.
Right, but the glitches that we were talking about in previous meetings have been addressed or hopefully corrected, or?
Yes, ma'am, in terms of with this new company, definitely, and probably Dr. Peña can answer that question a whole lot better. He was very much involved with the process, with the procurement process, and he can give you a little bit more detailed information, but the committee as a whole is very, very pleased with the recommendation.
Okay, well, sir, hopefully you're going to make gains on this. We can discourage people from applying, because it takes a three-day application.
Dr. Graham, Chair Fiero, as team board member, Dr. Sarata, Ms. Shaughnessy, VPs and colleagues, good evening. To answer your question, Dr. Graham, yes, this system, we believe, is going to add significant value to the district. We comprised a committee of several campus constituencies to participate in the process to evaluate the various vendors who participated in the RFP process. The committee members represented areas from information technology. I believe Mr. Abraham Huvail is here. We had representatives from the various associations, Faculty Association, Mr. Rudy Hernandez from professional staff, we had Ms. Leti Uranda from classified staff, we had Ms. Cynthia Arras, and from HR, we had myself and Mr. Albert Yanez, and then for finance, Mr. Fernando Flores. The reason we wanted their input is that they would have ownership, and they would be able to ask the tough questions, they would see the system, how it works. At the end of the day, they made a selection and recommendation to you that NeoGov be the system of choice to address our applicant tracking, our performance evaluations, our job descriptions, and introducing a new service called Onboarding, which will provide employees' services. Prior to becoming employed with the college, a lot of the forums and systems that would take place before electronically within the system. So, yes, ma'am, we believe this system by far is the system that we need to move forward.
And you have a way to get out of this contract if you're not satisfied with the performance further down the line, because I notice it's a five-year commitment, pretty much a renewable.
Yes, ma'am, I mean, there are certainly performance guidelines that we will, that we would expect NeoGov to meet. Let me add that NeoGov is the same representative for the City of El Paso and the County of El Paso, and the City of El Paso has been with NeoGov for 10 years, and they are, they couldn't be more ecstatic with the system they have. So I don't anticipate having any problems with NeoGov moving forward.
Dr. Peña, had you had any experience with this software before?
I, not, Chair Fiero, I haven't necessarily, but a lot of what they provided us, and provided the committee, were systems that we certainly need and could embrace right away.
And, Dr. Peña, is this something that, it's been tried internally, for example, have you gone and tried to, you know, make an application, or has there been a testing of it, so that we know?
Not yet, Ms. Solis, because we have to get the contract signed, and once we do that, then we'll go through an implementation period. So the whole idea is that, at a particular point in the process, we'll run parallel. So while we have our current system, with PeopleAdmin, we'll be testing and implementing the various modules for NeoGo.
Okay, so they don't let you do like a pre-test beforehand, before deciding you want it?
Not yet, but whatever we saw in the presentation personally met the committee's knees, and they were pleased with what they were providing, what they showed us.
And hopefully, one of our concerns, last time or whenever, was that any, an individual who applies to the college, you know, they don't, there's, sometimes they just fall through the cracks, or we're told maybe they don't get notification right away that their application has been received. This is going to take care of that, right? Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Peña?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Shansi.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Actually, I already have a motion. And a second. Mr. Uxter?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Purchase Services and Audio-Visual Equipment for Conference Rooms in the New Administrative Areas in the ASC Building A from Access Communications Group LLC in the Amount of $78,553.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Have they looked into, who's answering, have we looked into making one classroom available? Is, do we need all three? I mean, communication, all three? All three going to be running simultaneously all the time, or can we work out where we can put, enhance the communication equipment, one or two, and then just put it up where you can sign up for it? Do we need it in all three?
Mr. Uxter, I think there are three separate conference rooms that will have equipment that if we were to have training in there, or use for classrooms, it could accommodate that.
That's not the question.
I'm sorry, I never understood.
Do we need all three to be equipped?
We do, we do, and simply because here at ASC, we do need additional conference rooms, and again, they are different sizes in terms of conference rooms, and they are being equipped with different equipment.
Any other questions? Pam?
Mr. Uxter?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.4, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Examinators for District-Wide Sign Language Interpreting Services with Inter-American Interpreting Services LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $60,000 in the Annual Aggregate.
Motion to approve?
Second. Questions?
I just have a question. Does this come out of the budget for the Department of Disabilities, or is this a separate?
Actually, it's split between Human Resources and the Department of Center for Student with Disabilities.
But do we have, if it's, is it split like half and half?
It's based on the need. So if it's, for example, for employees, that we have to provide an accommodation, then it is under Human Resources Department. If it is for students or for faculty, then it is under the other department, the Center for Student with Disabilities, for students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pam, we're ready.
Mr. Uxter?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.5, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award a Three-Year Contract to Provide Vending Machine Services to Borderlands Snacks LLC.
Motion to approve 4.5 and 5.1?
Second.
Item 5.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award a Contract, to Contract Associates of El Paso LLC in the Amount of $106,707.
Any questions? Yeah, we're ready.
Mr. Uxter?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 6.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Enter Into a Contract to Upgrade the Law Enforcement Academy Firing Range with Action Target Incorporated in the Amount of $67,309.
Motion to approve 6.1 and 6.2?
Second.
Questions?
Would you let me read 6.2? Item 6.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Three-Year Grant Award from the Andrew W. Mellon Foundation in the Amount of $651,000.
Questions?
Mr. Spence, how many times have we upgraded that firing?
To my knowledge, since it was built, these particular shooting ranges have not been upgraded. We've done, you know, preventive maintenance, et cetera.
So that goes back to '95?
Correct. Yeah, so they're long overdue for an overhaul.
The only item I'd like to, just a lot of kudos under the leadership of Vice President Smith, Margie Nelson Rodriguez, Brian Kirby, and many of our English faculty, and the work that they did to ensure the Humanities Collaboration Grant from the Mellon Foundation. The Mellon Foundation is an incredibly prestigious foundation. This is a partnership with UTEP, and to be a part of that and to receive $651,000 from the Mellon Foundation is remarkable. So kudos to Mr. Smith, Ms. Margie Nelson Rodriguez, Mr. Kirby, and others for their work on that.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Uxter.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 6.3 Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Perkins State Leadership Grant Sub-Award from Austin Community College in the Amount of $18,000.
Move to approve items 6.3, 6.4, and 8.1.
Is there a second? Item 6.4 Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Texas Genuine Sustainability Grant Sub-Award from Victoria College in the Amount of $5,349. And you said 8.1 or 7.1?
Right, 8.1. It's also an acceptance of funding.
Item 8.1 Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of Funding from the Defense Logistics Agency, Department of Defense, for the Contract Opportunity Center in the Amount of $300,000.
Motion to approve?
I think we had a second.
Any questions?
None.
Okay, Pam, we're ready.
Mr. Uxter.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero. Item 7.1 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Continuing Education Tuition Rates for New Courses.
Move to approve 7.1 and 7.2?
Item 7.2 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Continuing Education Tuition Rates for Revised Courses.
Questions? We're ready, Pam.
Mr. Uxter.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 9.0 Unfinished Business. The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. Consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. Discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Consideration of specific personnel matters. Discussion about security personnel or devices. Or discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda, if the subject matters permitted, for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session.
Welcome. Early birthday wishes to Vice President Smith.
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday.
The time is 7:52.
You decided to give me one.
Trustees have reconvened in regular session.
Our next board meeting will be February 27th, 5:30 p.m. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
I want to. The name is an exception.